Good evening. We have a special meeting of the Urbana City Council. And I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
I think we have Mr. Jacobson and Mr. Roberts coming in right now. Okay, is there anyone who would like to address this Urbana City Council before we get started? I don't see anyone, unless Steve Carter wants to give a five-minute (laugh) and Tom Burns. Okay, we're here to have a presentation by airport consultant Jack Penning to see what we'd like to do. And we have Mike DiLaRizzo, do you want to introduce him?
Yeah, so, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm going to introduce Jack, just kind of set us up here. Over a year ago, the chancellor asked a community group to get together to look at the airport, look at the operations of the airport, and look at it, and trying to enhance air service at the airport. We engaged with Jack's firm to help us through that process. We had, like I said, about 20 members, Laura Pressing, Representative Urbana on it. We met for a year, and we reported out the findings of that report, or that session, to the chancellor in late January. And so this is kind of a synopsis of that. Jack's going to go through, and we have some updates of where we're at in the process right now.
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to the presentation. This is a summation, essentially, of the work that the task force did. And as the mayor knows, it was a long process, but I feel like we have some great recommendations moving forward to ensure not only that the airport is a vital part of the community, but that it's reconnected to the community, and that it is a self-sustaining operation long-term. So we'll go through the agenda that I prepared for you. It's kind of a summation of all the work, and then the recommendations that were adopted by the chancellor, including our new brand, which we'll talk about first, what we learned about the market, the consumer behavior, and the consumer patterns that surprised us, operational performance and economic impact of the airport, what we're doing to develop additional flights. I think that's probably the thing we get the most questions about. And so we'll definitely talk about that, what our targets are, and how we're building our community coalition for support for service. And then our strategic goals moving forward, the recommendations that have been adopted that the task force put forward. So, to start off, our new brand, you see it there in front of you, Fly Champagne Urbana. We're not changing the name of the university's airport. The legal name of the university is still University of Illinois Willard Airport. What we are doing, though, is reconnecting the airport with the two major communities that it serves. So, the airport in all marketing moving forward will be promoted as Fly Champagne Urbana, and then with taglines using the CU, CU at the Beach, CU in Dallas, with daily non-stops, so on and so forth. And we had a lot of debate over the brand, and I think it's important to point out that the mayor was exceptionally vocal that the recommendation of some of the members of the task force to just call the airport Fly Champagne, the mayor was vocal enough to convince the entire task force to make sure we included the full metro area name, Champagne Urbana. It made sense to all of us, and we're glad that that was the final outcome, to include that.
I was trying for Urbana Champagne, but I thought that was pushing it a bit much.
That's true.[245.51][245.51](laugh) That is true. That is true. We, yeah, we went this way, well, for the marketing purpose at the bottom, clearly, but that is a true story. So, we're very happy. You'll also note that we have adopted the official colors of University of Illinois Athletics into the logo. So these, this is the official orange and the official blue of the universities. We try to ensure that people still understand that the airport is closely aligned with the university. So what have we learned throughout this process? Well, the big piece we learned was that people don't drive for free parking. And I think that was an important bit of information to figure out. So when we look at the travelers who travel to and from Champagne County, which are represented here, the percentages who use each airport, we only capture about a third of the passengers that travel to and from Champagne County. But the majority, 60%, drive to either Indy or Chicago for flights, and they pay more for parking when they do that. We only lose 6% of passengers to Bloomington. And of those passengers, we don't have a demonstrable case of a passenger who chose Bloomington because parking was free. The reasons that are given are the flights were more convenient or less expensive in the long run. So we were able to kind of push that red herring to the side so that people understood what consumers want is convenience of service and lower fares. And that's what we have to work on. And that's why people use those other airports.
Jack, real quickly, I was wondering if it's, what are the demographics of the people going to Chicago or Indianapolis? Is it families? Is it larger groups, or is it individuals, or a mix?
It's a mix, actually, and you probably, it would stand to reason that families would maybe go to Indianapolis to get on Southwest and save money on bags and everything else. And that does happen. But what we find is that a large number of our business travelers, in fact, a larger number than represented here, go to Indianapolis and Chicago. We've been meeting with large businesses throughout the community over the last month and a half, in one-on-one settings. These businesses are telling us that they go to these other airports not because of the fare, but because they can get non-stop flights, and they don't have to worry about a connection. So we lose both business travelers and leisure travelers. So when we look at recruiting additional service, the more non-stops, the more people will be able to retain. And I'll get into what we're recruiting here in just a little while. So there was an article in the News Gazette that reported that Champagne had basically the worst on-time percentage in Illinois, and one of the worst in the Midwest. And we wanted to go and pull the actual data and try to figure out what was going on. And what we found is that the data reported by the Department of Transportation shows that we are the most on-time airport in downstate Illinois. So we only have about 19% of our flights that are delayed, and the average delay is only 25 minutes. So while there's a perception that service is unreliable, the data shows for 2014 that we actually were much more reliable than people think.
And is that, can you tell me, what carrier, is it both carriers?
Well, we have American here, so we have American to both Chicago and Dallas, and that includes all of their flights.
Because my experience was so opposite of that, that I find that rather amazing.
Yeah, so this is just straight data, all the flights, commercial flights in and out of the airport for, well, it's the first 11 months of 2014, so we don't have December's data yet. But, and this is pulled directly from the DOT's website, so I just did a screen grab so you'd know I didn't mess with the data. This is directly from the Department of Transportation. So we have 75% altogether of our flights operate either on time or early. So you've got a three-of-four chance of being on time.
Do you have statistics on flight cancellations?
Yes, so we have five points, it's actually on here, 5.7% cancellation rate, which is about three points under Americans' average at Chicago. So it's not good, that's still a high rate. The national average is about 1.5%, but the Midwest has much higher cancellation rates than the West Coast does, because the weather's a lot more difficult here.
Well, I can only echo Dennis in that my experience and my family's experience is we have had, I guess, bad luck. Our largest delays are three days and infinity.[556.54][556.54](laugh) We had a family visitor who was supposed to leave on Sunday and left on Wednesday. And then we've had, you know, a short trip that, by the time we were going to go, was no longer worth going. So I used to be a regular flyer out of CMI, and I haven't flown out of CMI for quite a while now.
Well, and you hit upon one of the big key pieces that we need to work on, and that is that statistics don't matter if you're the one that's been affected in a way where a trip was canceled. So I flew in here every month last year for the task force, and I had two trips where my flights were canceled and I had to get a car. So it happens to everyone. And so those stories are important when we interface with the carriers, because they need to understand, while the statistics are okay, it's the personal experiences that make a difference in the long run.
I'll add one more. About a month ago, I had occasion to go to Dallas. I thought, aha, I can get a non-stop out of CMI. The fare was between $700 and $800. I did the round trip from O'Hare for $100.
Yeah, well, and that, the issue we're running into there is the fact that we just don't have enough seats. And so the planes are filling up early. Last year, we ran 85% full, which meant that on peak days, we didn't have a single available seat. And when that happens, you know, the fares are scaled to try and keep a couple seats open the last minute for the business traveler who must travel on that day. When that happens, we're not competitive. And the solution to that is getting additional seats into the market. And it's, that's the biggest piece of what we'll be working on. These maps that you see illustrate retention by airport and then by zip code within the region. So Champagne County and Urbana, they're kind of on the left side of each of those maps. But what these tell us is where you see the red on the Indianapolis, which is the top-right map, those are people who use Indianapolis versus other airports. Where you see the Bloomington retention, it's mostly up and out of Champagne County where folks go to Bloomington. So within Champagne Urbana itself, we actually retain well. 56% of people who live in the cities of Champagne and Urbana, when they fly in and out, use Willard Airport. So that's good news, but it also shows that Bloomington doesn't have near as much impact as it, as many of us think it does. There's a lot of numbers on this page, so don't worry too much about the numbers. The bottom line on this is we're a low-cost airport for the carriers. The carriers pay the airport an average of about $5 per person who gets on the airplane, which is low. The average for airports of our size is about $8.60. And Willard is able to generate a lot more revenue per passenger to offset the cost of operation than other airports in the region. So Willard generates about $10 per passenger who gets on a plane, where Bloomington's only generating about $4.45. Now that, of course, comes from the parking fee, but it illustrates how important the parking fee is to the overall fiscal operation of the airport. Now, economic impact is a big piece, yes?
Could you go back to that slide?
I can't.
The cost per in planement is the cost to the airline?
Cost to the airline, exactly.
So these very low costs, such as Bloomington, I assume there's a subsidy operating?
Yeah, Bloomington has a property tax. So they levy a property tax that basically gen, yeah, it generates about $1.8 million a year that goes directly to the airport. And Springfield, Illinois, also has a property tax. So the airports that have property taxes are able to offer exceptionally low cost to the airlines.
Is that a major factor for the airlines?
It is. Well, when, I mean, very simply put, when an airline gets a person on a plane at Bloomington, they make $3 more than they would putting that same person on the plane in Champagne, Champagne Urbana, if the fare is exactly the same. Now, if our fare is more, it offsets that, which it is. We generate a higher average fare to offset additional cost.
Could you explain a little bit about the property tax? Is the property tax on the airport property?
No, it's a-
In the city's property?
In Bloomington, it's specifically in the cities of Bloomington and Normal, where there is property tax on everyone. The Greater McLean County does not have the property tax, but there is a proposal to expand it to the entire county. In Springfield, all of Sangamon County pays an airport property tax on all of their property.
How much is that?
Well, in Bloomington, it works out to about-
I think it's about $60 per household.
$60, yeah, on average, no. I don't have the exact number per thousand, $1,000 of assessed valuation, but it's about 60,000, or 60,000, it's about $60 for the average household.
Okay, thank you.
In those, in those situations, those airports have a lot of flexibility in their budget to do things that Willard Airport just doesn't have, because it doesn't have the tax revenue. But that's why it's so important that Willard be self-sustaining from a business standpoint. It has to run like a business long-term in order for it to be viable. There is a huge economic impact of having this airport in this community, and we've done a very poor job in the past of communicating the impact. The airport generates each year about $102 million in impact in Champagne County. There are 263 jobs on the airport itself. When you look at the flow through, throughout the economy, it's 949 jobs in our community that are created by the airport. The on-airport payroll is $32.5 million a year. So if that goes away, that's a huge hit to the economy of the region. So it's, beyond being the gateway to the region, it's very important in the jobs that it does provide.
What region do you consider that CMI serves?
Well, we consider the larger region that I show in these maps. So Edgar County, Vermillion County, Coles County, Champagne County, a little bit of Piatt. But when I talk about these economic impact numbers, these are only Champagne County.
Okay, thanks.
So we're looking at a couple of different things. When we look at economic impact, it's much easier if we just use a defined region as defined by government agencies for economic data. And that is Champagne County and the MSA. So, air service, we've talked about the challenges that we have with our current air service. The biggest thing that we can do is to recruit additional air service. It's become a tremendous challenge, and this is, this is why, call this the NCA Tournament of the Airlines, and we're to the final four. You can see we've got four airlines left. Before deregulation in 1978, there were 18 major carriers in this country, and then a number of regionals and other carriers that aren't even represented here. By 2000, you know, we were down to 11. And today, we have four. So there just aren't that many airlines for us to go and recruit anymore. These four carriers have 90% of all the seats that are available in the country this year. So every other carrier besides these four only makes up 10% of the total air market. We have American, of course, that's now the world's largest carrier after the merger with US Airways. But there's a limited number of targets to recruit. A big question we always get asked is, when are we going to get Southwest? And I can say, I had a long meeting with Southwest last week. Southwest is firmly entrenched in larger markets. We can have Southwest when we can support about eight departures a day on a big plane, and that would be, that would take a community about five times the size of our community. You know that Southwest did take over Airtran, as you can see in the chart, and they, of course, pulled out of Bloomington-Normal, because they just couldn't support the level of service they need to provide. So we're left with limited targets. Having said that, we're recruiting against the other airports in our region for additional service. And you can see where we're all served right now on American, but we're all pushing for service to the east. And we have this competition, but we're trying to position ourselves as the best option. And we do that in a number of ways, by showing how strong the university travel market is, by communicating with our business partners, which we've been doing, and getting their travel data, and showing how much they pay for fares, and how many times they go to the East Coast. In doing this, we know that the most likely target to the east is Charlotte, which is a large hub for American now. Washington service, especially to Washington National, is tremendously unlikely, even though it is our number-one unserved city, because it's slot-restricted. So the government has a limited number of slots for use there. All the slots are in use now, and it's highly unlikely that a carrier's going to move a flight that flies Washington to Boston to give us a flight to DC's National Airport. Now, we're also working on United to Washington-Dulles, United to Newark as an alternate to New York City, so there are other options. But when we look within the American network, Charlotte's most likely, and Miami being second most likely, and all of these airports are fighting for that service. Our targets, though, as you can see, go beyond American. United has been in discussions with us, we met again with them last week. We've had very productive discussions with them over the last year or so, and we'll continue that. We're also working to recruit low-cost service. We talk about families wanting to go to Florida, service like you have at Bloomington, where you have twice-a-week service to Orlando, you have twice-a-week service to St. Pete. Those kind of services would have a nice niche here as well. And we've done a lot with the airport's cost structure in developing different ways to charge different types of airlines to make it more attractive to new carriers. So beyond air service, then, we have our other strategic goals, and the overarching goal is to ensure that the airport is self-sustaining in the long term. So we don't have the benefit of the tax, and we do have an airport that requires a subsidy from the university. Our goal is to ensure that the airport will not require subsidy in the future. The first transition that you will see will be in terms of the management of the airport. The university is working to a, towards a new management structure. There will soon be a request for proposals for a private firm to manage the airport for the university. This has been done before, College Station, Texas, the Texas A&amp;M University owns and operates the airport there, and has contracted with a private firm to manage the airport. So we will be accepting applications from firms, the university will decide if there is a qualified firm that responds. If not, at the same time, we're developing a job description for a CEO for the airport that could run within the university system. This would be a person with more decision-making authority, and instead of decisions going back all the way up to the chancellor, it would be someone on the field who can be an integral part of the community and make decisions there about future business. Either way, the director of the airport will be much more visible in the community than we've seen in the past. Will be more of a part of the community. Our goal is to reconnect again the airport with the community. Also, we've developed, this has already been developed, a airport advisory board, again, with major stakeholders, with the cities, the airlines, the tenants that we have, the University of Illinois, to ensure that concerns from across the community are heard, and to ensure there is a constant and consistent line of communication. So you didn't hear from us. I mean, I would have no idea the last time that the city council here heard from the airport or talked to us. Hopefully, this becomes much more regular, and that you have someone to call, to talk to when you have concerns. And so the goal of the advisory board is to ensure that when decisions are being made, the input is coming in from all areas of Champagne County. Now, one of the things that came up from the task force will require some help from you. A lot of these require your help, but one in particular, and that is taxi licensing. We got an earful about the quality of taxis in the community, and the quality of the taxis serving the airport. And one of the most important things that the task force wanted to share was that we all need to work together, that being the cities and the county, to work toward more stringent appearance standards, driver training, and customer service, and the acceptance of credit cards. So it's important that I have the opportunity to tell you that the task force keyed in on that as a very important piece of making the airport more attractive to those who are flying into the community and don't live here primarily. In addition to that, there is a plan now to automate the parking system that will reduce costs over the long term and help us better manage the parking lots. And then a permanent rental car service facility is in the plans. Right now, rental car service is done under a tent, and it's not sustainable. And the rental cars have actually, rental car companies have agreed to fund this entirely. So we're talking about a $600,000, $1 million project that'll be funded entirely by the tenant rental cars. So those are three pieces of the ground transportation, ground transportation at the airport that we're working on. A number of additional action items are on our list, though, and these are to ensure that we have a long-term, sustainable airport. One is that we need to work primarily with Sevoy, but also with the county and other jurisdictions to ensure that land-use controls are put in place to protect essentially the approaches to the runways. Some work has been done on this already, but long-term, we need to ensure that there's nothing blocking the approaches. For Urbana, that's not a large piece, because only one approach flies it all over Urbana, and it's a secondary approach, and it's clear now. We need to prioritize land acquisition based on that protection. A big piece that we heard time and time again is improving the wayfinding for the airport, making it much easier to find your way to the airport. That'll go with the rebranding. When we rebrand, we'll work on that. Longer-term, acquiring strategic parcels for development, and those would be for other kinds of development on the airport, whether they're commercial, whether it's hotel, those kind of things that are probably 10 or more years away, but we want to be prepared for. And finally, working to secure $10 million in funding for a new control tower. We have our FAA design for the tower complete. No airport or local money is involved. We just need that to be included in an FAA plan, an FAA reauthorization, of which there is one that comes up this fall in Congress. As part of the FAA budget, $10 million is less than 1/100 of a percent. So we're looking at a very, very small amount of money for the FAA, but for us, that new tower would be critical in ensuring that we have a safe operation long-term. These are all things that the task force keyed in on. So those are, it's a lot to take in, there's been a lot of work done, but those are the main key points of what we're doing. Now, we're, obviously, not everything that we're working on is in here, but these are the big pieces. So if you have any questions, happy to answer, and more than anything, just happy to have the opportunity to brief you on the work that we've been doing.
Aaron?
So, thanks a lot for the presentation. I think it's very helpful. It's my first time on the council, whatever, but I find this to be very helpful. I haven't heard of anything like this before, and it's, it's good to get this information and to see little things that make a big difference, like the quality of taxi services and things like that, protecting the runways. One of the things that stood out to me was that you said that there would be a private firm that would manage the airport, and I'm very curious as to what impact that will have on the jobs, the 263 jobs that you were talking about.
So those, the 263 jobs are for everything at the airport, it's not just the university employees. The Flight Star has a large operation out there. It depends, but right now, the request for proposal would be worded that we would guarantee those positions for a year. Usually, just like in the case when we closed the aviation, we transition those staff into the rest of the university, or they may choose to work for the new provider, it's really up to them.
So the, for instance, the building service workers who's out there, this person, so basically, that would no longer be a union job?
They would transfer into the campus, and it would be up to the new vendor to determine that.
Okay. And as far as the authority, the new authority for the executive director, the position of the CEO that you are talking about, can you be more specific about what that would mean?
Well, that depends. If we don't get a firm to respond to the RFP, we would, the position now is more of operations position. The new person, the new CEO, would have much more authority to make decisions in discussing agreements with the airlines, with the rental car agencies, land acquisition, those types of things.
And as far as those 263 jobs out there, do you have a breakdown on what percentage of those are actually union jobs?
Very small amount of those are. Most of those are private entity jobs out there.
I believe the number, the number is a little less than 10%.
Charlie?
So, I've been a regular user of CMI, it's my primary way of getting in- It's my primary way of getting in and out of town. I traveled so much last year, American gave me some new classification. It helps when you fly to Australia, when you get the mileage up. The, my point here is that I've been flying in and out of there almost 40 years now. I've seen all these changes. I've seen the university do lots of different things. I've seen the community do lots of different things to try to keep things going, but nothing's And, you know, I've seen rebranding. I've seen different people brought in to run it, things like that. We've spent money trying to get airplanes, you know, other destinations to come in. And it almost seems like we could be throwing away good money after, you know, good money after bad sort of thing, given the consolidation of the airlines and such. So, how is this different?
This is, it's an excellent question. This is the first time, well, I've been working in some facet with the airport on air service recruitment for seven, seven or eight years. This is the first time since I've been here that we've taken a holistic view of the airport and tried to develop a strategic plan that wasn't just a Band-Aid for a singular problem. So, we've come up, hey, nobody knows who we are, let's market ourselves as CMI. That was before I worked with the airport. But that was just trying to solve one singular issue. Or, hey, let's try to get Delta and throw some money at them and see if they'll come in. That was trying to solve one issue. What we're trying to do here is to develop an entire structure and culture for the airport that will engrain it in the community in a new way and that will solve some of, not just some of the problems that we have, but solve the overarching problem of a sustainable long-term business through developing other sources of business, through developing air service, through ensuring we're connected with the community. So, it's the first time the airport has had a complete strategic plan for all facets of its business.
And one additional thing is the chancellor has made a commitment to this, and she's actually gone out and met with airline representatives. I don't think that's ever happened before either.
You know, contrary to Dennis and Eric's experiences, almost all of my experiences have been positive. And when flights have been canceled, I've usually been rerouted pretty successfully. Yeah, there are a few delays. You have to be flexible. And I also do back-of-the-envelope calculations. You know, what does it take, what does it cost me to fly out of all of these other places? Very easy to do comparisons and so on. And ultimately, I choose not to drive because it's not as safe as flying gambling against, you know, delays. And it has paid off for me through the years. And so, you know, I would encourage people to make that back-of-the-envelope calculation. And I think that's something that, you know, from a marketing point of view, I'd like to emphasize. You know, there is a cost to your time when you go to these other places. There is a cost, you know, does the car break down or whatever? Yeah, I've had to, I've had to rent a car once. I've had to take a bus down once. And, you know, but over, over the course of almost 40 years, it's been a pretty successful airport for me to use. And so, anything that would expand the service to other places would be great. The only time I go out of Bloomington normal is when I have to travel to, you know, when I'm wanting to travel to Central or South America because they have great flights through Atlanta to the places that I go.
Yeah, I did, I really appreciate your comments. In terms of the marketing strategy with the cost calculation, one of the things that we've developed is a little widget that will be right on the website, FlyCMI, and FlyChampaign-Urbana when we get that going. By the way, our target launch for this brand is right around the beginning of August. So, you're getting a preview of it now, but you won't really see it in the community until August. But one of the things we've developed is a widget that calculates everything for you. So, all you do is you type in your airfare from CMI and then your airfare from all the other places, and it calculates everything else. And so, we're hoping to drive people to that as a new way of thinking about the true cost of flying local.
Yeah, but being a family of four, say, and that was the, that's, that's when I found myself flying out of O'Hare or flying out of Indy. And that's where that back-of-the-envelope calculation, it's when you're a family of three or four and you're going someplace where it's hard to be competitive.
Absolutely. And so, we're never going to be able to retain 100% of our traffic. Not even Chicago retains 100% of its traffic. They lose a lot to Rockford. What we have to do is we have to try to encourage people to just check us. And if it works out, that's an extra passenger. If it doesn't, okay, we understand, but next time you fly, please check us again.
And my last question is, what's the chance of getting a little bit, you know, a little bit larger planes to, say, Dallas, which, you know, or even Dallas twice a day would be, you know, that's a great connection going west. And so, you know, that, to me, seems like almost a no-brainer.
Yeah, and that's something that we didn't address in the presentation, but has actually become a large focus for us. So, Flightstar is a maintenance base for the type of aircraft that we have now, which is a 50-seat jet. Those 50-seat jets are being retired relatively quickly by all major carriers and being replaced by 76-seat jets. Flightstar is looking at a new hangar development to be able to perform maintenance on the larger jets. And it would be our goal to not only have the maintenance on the larger jets, which would necessitate planes on, or flights on larger jets, but also to leverage that to recruit service on other carriers. So, we've been meeting frequently with Flightstar and working closely with them, and we have a couple of conversations with some other carriers coming up to try and make that happen.
Eric?
So, a couple of questions. I guess one is, well, you probably don't know the answer to this, but I'm sure, because I've done this before, that if I had bought, if I had looked into a ticket through Dallas to Los Angeles, it would have cost me less than to fly to Dallas. I mean, the round trip to Dallas was like off-scale. And so, I don't understand that. I don't know if you have insights into that.
Yeah, so, if you want to understand airline pricing, you could replace the seal there, the seal of the city, with a bullseye and just throw darts at it. Because that's about how much sense it makes. But I can tell you what's going, so, American wants to, their goal in Champaign is not to carry local traffic to Chicago and Dallas. Their goal is for our people to feed the network. And so, they raise the prices on the local in order to discourage you from buying a ticket to Dallas. They don't want you to buy that ticket. What they want you to do is to fill up one of their 15 flights a day from Dallas to Los Angeles. And how they do that is by pricing that so attractively that you will purchase that ticket, or a customer going to LA will purchase the ticket instead of a customer going to Dallas. And it seems totally counterintuitive, but it's just how the hub-and-spoke system works. Dallas has much more capacity than it can handle as a city of its size, and it relies on cities like us to fill up all of its flights.
The other question I wanted to ask, you mentioned College Station, and College Station seems like a really interesting model because they're about the size of Champaign and Urbana put together. They're about the distance from Houston in one direction and Dallas in the other that we are from Indianapolis and Chicago. And are they now, you know, are they now sustaining? Are the, is, are things really working at College Station?
It's, it's too early to tell because the management company's only been there a little more than a year. What we do know, though, is that airport is slightly different in that the university also owns the Flightstar operation there. So, that they operate, and that's very profitable. So, the private management company can make a large profit on what we call the fixed-base operation, all the general aviation stuff, and use that to subsidize its commercial service and marketing and all those, and that's what it's doing. We're in a situation where, since Flightstar is privately owned, we don't have another revenue source to help us subsidize. And that's going to be more challenging for a private company to be able to come in. That private company came in and invested a lot of its own money in marketing and in air service development because it knew it would get the revenue from the fixed-base operation. Where here, that's why I say if we get a qualified bidder, it will be great, but I'm not certain that we will. Different financial situation.
I wonder if you could comment on Lafayette, Indiana, and their airport?
Yeah, we've actually done, our firm has done quite a bit of work with them, and of course, that's owned by Purdue University, the airport there. Has no commercial service. Its last commercial service left in 2001. They went down a road about three years ago to recruit commercial service back and found out it would just be so expensive, so many millions of dollars, that it made much more sense to drop their, what we call, it's a Part 139 certification, doesn't matter the name, certification for commercial service. They dropped that. It's a lot less expensive to maintain an airport when you don't have to have a secure perimeter and everything else. And it's worked well for them from a training standpoint and a private aviation standpoint, but they have strategically decided not to have air service.
Okay. Bill Brown?
Yeah, I had a question first about the data source. When you said data compiled, is that, I guess, the later stuff about the taxi standards was probably from survey data, but do you also have access to a database that you know exactly where people have flown from Champaign County and which airports are missing?
Absolutely, yes. So, we have, we have several data sources that we pull from. One is a booking engine data source that's all zip-coded, so we know exactly what zip code people fly out of. Records essentially all transactions. We have another that is a clearinghouse between carriers when you buy a ticket on multiple carriers, and it splits the fare for each one. We can see all of that data. And then, the Department of Transportation keeps both a 100% sample of everyone on every single airplane and also a 10% sample of every ticket that's sold in or out of the United States or within the United States. So, we mesh together all of those data sources to get our true market picture. It's not terribly complicated because we have everything by zip code. There's, we do have to adjust for some error. You know, a company may be based in New York but has an office here, so all the tickets look like they came out of New York, that kind of thing, but we adjust internally for that.
And I'm not sure what the status of the Piaton Airport is. Do you know, can you talk a little bit about that?
So, the state of Illinois is going to embark upon another large study for that airport. They actually asked us to bid and we declined because, well, for a number of reasons. Politically, it's going to be a real football, and I'm not sure that anyone wants to be wrapped up in it. With the, so, O'Hare had a new runway added about 18 months ago, and there's another new runway being built right now. When that runway is completed in about a year, O'Hare will be able to handle four arrivals per minute and three departures in the same minute. So, seven operations per minute. When that happens, the need for another airport will decline significantly. Also, a couple of major carriers at O'Hare, United and American, have both announced here in the last week, they're going to transition to larger aircraft at O'Hare with more passengers per flight in order to reduce the number of flights. As that happens, the need for additional runways will go down. For us, Piaton is so far in the future, we don't really even factor it in to our strategic plan. If it's there, it certainly will take passengers away. Whether it will ever be built is really a big question in my mind. There's a lot of aviation infrastructure in Chicago. There are several other airports that are already built that are within an hour of Chicago that could handle flights today, like DeKalb, more flights at Rockford and Gary, Indiana.
And then, also, I know there's some, like, Vacation Charter companies, I think Funjet maybe was one of them, flew out of St. Louis. Is there any chance of having something like that come in and do occasional flights that would attract people from a whole East, Central Illinois or Indianapolis region or whatever?
Absolutely. So, we have discussions with carriers like that and tour companies frequently. We do have service about, well, it's for four-day trips about once a month to Laughlin, Nevada on Sun Country. You'll see ads in the News Gazette for that. We have met with a group called Vacation Express. They're a tour operator. They charter Canadian Airlines aircraft and operate periodically to places like the Bahamas. We're working on that. And then, working with companies like Allegiant and National Airlines to work on Sun Destination Service.
Diane?
So, I understand about 25% of you, vice students, are now international. What impact is that demographic having on, on the airport? And it seems like they all have to go out of Chicago, right?
They don't have to.
But they, but I would...
They do because they just don't know the service exists. And that's because we've done a very poor job of educating them. So, we actually were having a discussion earlier today about the direct mail pieces and direct email that will go out to all of the new students. And when the university representatives travel to Asia in particular, they will have our information on the flights that are available, the connections that are available. In many cases, it's cheaper on an international flight to add on the Champaign segment than just to fly to Chicago. So, we want to make sure people understand that. What we tell the carriers, we're trying to leverage this for additional service, too. We have the second-largest international student body of any university in the United States after USC. That's amazing. 9,800 international students. That is a stunning number, and there is so much potential revenue for the carriers there that I think we can, well, we're hoping to be able to leverage it for additional connections, especially to Asia.
So, are you saying they don't fly from Chicago to Champaign?
Correct. They get on buses, they take the train. Yep. Very, very few fly from Chicago to Champaign. Very, very few.
Well, that explains a lot. Okay. All right. And then, I have never taken a taxi in this town, obviously. I have never needed to. So, this kind of comes as a surprise to me. What control do we have over appearance of our taxi drivers, for that matter? And how does Uber fit into all this?
So, we, as Jack mentioned, we heard this a lot. We've gone out and met with several companies, and when they are bringing recruits in or trying to hire people, this issue came up a lot about the taxi service. They would get in dirty cars. The drivers, they wouldn't know what the fares were. They were, you know, not clean-looking and those types of things. So, our understanding is that Urbana is responsible for licensing the agreement, and maybe Steve can help here. Steve is, by the way, is the chair, was the chair of the task force and now chair of the advisory board. But between Champaign and Urbana, the decision was made years ago that Urbana would be the ones that licensed the taxis. And so, I don't, so, it's one of the reasons we're here. I don't know what that entails and what kind of regulations or anything happened associated with that.
Well, we do that, and we've concluded, based on our new finance director, that what we're charging does not cover the cost. And so, we have to work with Champaign on this, and the whole Uber issue is being discussed. And, you know, I haven't heard that the taxi drivers were sloppy-looking, but I don't usually use the taxis either. So, we will address that. Now that it's been raised, we'll figure out what to do. Bill?
I think we pass identical ordinances as far as how the licenses are, what the expectations are and what the requirements are for licensing. So, it would be something that we would work with Champaign on to come up with new standards, but we do administer the license itself and, yeah.
Eric?
So, I also haven't ridden the taxis, but my impression from just seeing the drivers in the vehicles at, at the airport, and one really memorable encounter with a bellicose, drunken taxi driver at Perkins Restaurant one night. You know, I, it leads me to think that these complaints have some significant credence and that we, we really should take that one seriously.
Aaron?
I guess I'm going to channel my Diane Marlin here. I don't know exactly what authority we have to tell people what they can look like when they drive a taxi. I don't know... I don't know exactly what does our licensing authority have over, you know, how the person dresses. Now, of course, you know, drinking and that type of thing. I mean, but that's still going to fall on the taxi, on the company who owns the taxi, right? I don't know how we're going to monitor or regulate that through our licensing. Maybe somebody could enlighten me.
I suppose we would talk to the companies first and see what-
And maybe Jack could jump in. But there are airports that set certain standards of who can pick up and drop off at their airports. There are certain things that they have in place and contracts with taxi companies.
So the university could require a special license for pickup-drop-off at the airport. It is the university's property. Would rather not do that, though, because you could end up with a situation where you have no taxis that travel to the airport. It would be much more effective if everybody was on the same page. And I think probably the biggest thing, and maybe I glossed over it, is just requiring taxis to be able to take credit cards would be a huge step in the right direction.
Wasn't there a time when you did have to have some kind of special? Or it seemed like there was only one taxi that, or one limo service that fed the airport?
I think they tried that at one point, but it was, that was a number of years ago and it wasn't successful. I think it became too hard to monitor. They had a lot of other firms trying to show up. And unless you have somebody, which many airports do, have somebody standing out there trying to monitor that, it becomes difficult to stay on top of it.
Yeah, because I remember it used to be just one service for many, many years. It was, it's only recently that that broke down. So now what we have essentially is a free-for-all. Basically, anybody who can, anybody can basically get a taxi license.
Well, and these comments have come from the folks that work at the airport and people that we've talked to. But what's surprising to me is we've met with these businesses to find out about air service development. This issue kept coming up. So aside from trying to get direct flight somewhere, the issue about taxis came up.
Dennis.
Could you, maybe I missed this in the very beginning of your presentation, but to what percent of the users of the airport services are university-oriented work versus local business and family?
So we did a study on the university travel. Now, it doesn't, it wasn't able to capture every single ticket that the university is responsible for because it only captures what's in the internal system, which wouldn't be people who are working on a separate grant or for a separate company. But it gives us a decent idea of the volume. Right now, the university, just faculty and staff represents about 10% of all the passengers who use the airport. So the airport does around 240 departing passengers per day and about 26 departing passengers per day are linked directly to the university, through the university travel system. Now, that's an under-reported number, keep in mind, because we have a number of people who are, we have researchers who are working for specific companies who are on grants. So you can add probably between 20 and 30% more passengers to the university. And that also does not include students. So students are still another large number there. In terms of, our estimate would be probably between 40 and 45% of all traffic is generated one way or another by the university.
And, you know, it would make a big difference because I imagine that a lot of the university travel is somehow subsidized by departments, department travel, university business. But the part that's not is, you know, individual pocketbook travel. And then when you had, you know, talk about whether parking is important to you, if you can write this off because it's either a business expense or the university's paying for parking, who cares? But, you know, if I'm going to go for, you know, out west to see my brother and I'm going to leave my car somewhere for a week, it becomes an important part of my travel expense. So, you know, I don't think that you can downplay the importance of it to a lot of the people who live in the community. If you're thinking of Willard only is only servicing business people or people who have, you know, university accounts, I think you have a kind of a rather narrow window about why people choose to travel to Bloomington. But one of the other things that I was wondering about, I also have had really bad taxi rides to the airport. I mean, almost every time I've gone to the airport or I've gone to the train terminal to catch a train and go to Chicago to catch the airport, you know, connection. You know, and I'll take the Blue Line up to O'Hare because maybe I have, sometimes I've had international travel and for whatever reason, the additional cost of the local connection becomes a worse bargain for me for the travel destinations that I have. I'm going places like maybe Albuquerque, Detroit, you know, and these are just don't figure in to be economical. Now, I haven't taken a flight out of the local airport in probably about four years because of some of these reasons. But I have done a lot of foreign travel in the last four years. So I was just trying to get a sense of who you think your market is. And really, do you think it's not unreasonable for people to want to have? Free parking is a wonderful asset and you have to leave your car there for a week. I will actually go to Indianapolis rather than Chicago, partly because I know that if I leave my car there for 13 days, the parking ticket's a lot less. So, I mean, you know, when you're, there are people who actually, you know, are looking for the diamond quarter savings.
Yeah, and I don't doubt it. I do believe, well, our research is pretty definitive in saying it's not a key factor in how people purchase airline tickets. I will say, without the parking revenue in the budget, we would need to come up with between $500,000 and $700,000 a year in some other kind of revenue.
Yeah, so to that point, basically, the university is subsidizing that parking. We're spending about a half million dollars a year to subsidize the airport. So if you look at Bloomington's model where they have, or Springfield where they have a tax base, that's how they're paying for the free parking. So it's really the community that is subsidizing the cost of the parking rather than one entity.
It does, it creates a different impression, though, about, I guess, maybe, I don't know, usability or friendliness or something like that. There's something about that aspect that is just so much more, I don't know, supportive. I think it's, it may not be the largest thing that this university, this city's airport has as a challenge, but it's one of the impressions.
Yeah, I agree. And to be honest with you, we went round and round on this in the task force and we tried to find the revenue to somehow offset. And the revenue isn't there unless somehow we can all get together and find a new tax.
So then, so then what I'm wondering is, what's the real future for this airport as a competitive body? When you have people, two other airports that are in the, you know, within a reasonable distance of driving that are so much more competitive, you know, from the get-go?
We have a niche market and it will be for some time. We have a niche market built on specific convenience to specific destinations. And you talk about the business-leisure split. Still over 50% of our traffic is leisure travelers. You know, upwards of 40% is business travel. We try to leverage the business traveler for service because the business traveler is less fare-sensitive and will pay more and more attractive to the carrier. So if we can leverage that for additional service long-term, we can potentially grow into other places that would help the greater community access the places that they need to go. Now, when we think about it long-term, what we do know is we have an exceptionally strong economy here. We have one of the great universities of the world that has to be connected to the national air transportation system. And we have some very large and growing companies that find the airport as a key to their success. So I think it behooves us all to work towards an airport that has lower fares, that has lower costs. The more passengers we get into that airport, the more flights we get, the more revenue that we get from those passengers. Every time a passenger gets on a plane, the airport gets $4.50. So the more of that that we can leverage, the lower price we can have parking be long-term. But it's all about, this airport is entirely supported by the people who use it, unlike our competing airports.
You haven't talked yet about one other factor that I'd like to ask about. And that is that in the times that I've used the airport, I've watched the, there was a cafeteria or there was a food service and now pretty much there's none. There's just a snack shop or, I don't know, magazine bar or something like that. Has anybody talked about that as being a problem for this airport?
Absolutely. That was a big thing that the task force pointed out right at the beginning of the work. The reason you don't see it here is, the research concluded in the research from the previous cafe operation, we need to roughly double our passengers to have enough traffic to be able to support that kind of operation to where it's break-even. The previous one was subsidized heavily by the university and just frankly wasn't used frequently. We have too many gaps in the day where nobody is there. Now, we are looking into some other ideas that would include kiosks that are set up only during certain times of the day when it's busiest, things like that. It's a definite consumer touch point that has to be fixed. But the key way we do that is by getting more people into the terminal.
Okay, Aaron has a question and then Diane.
But I would be happy to let Diane go first, go right here.
Well, thank you. I remember the days when you could get on an Ozark Air flight and get to Washington DC in the morning and take a flight back in the afternoon. And it was great, but that's not ever going to happen again, probably. But so, so from my personal experience, it's the inability to get back and forth to Chicago more than once or twice a day. So what's, what, can we focus on-
We do have six departures a day to Chicago now and six returning.
Oh, maybe I haven't tried recently then.
Yeah, there are six, if they're not showing up, it's because they're sold out. It runs very full, but we have six flights there. So that's a lot of lift to Chicago. We do only have the one flight to Dallas. We've got to work on that. And we're working on some other things with some other carriers to try and make the connectivity better.
But it sounds like the focusing on that marketing is as much as important as actually the number of flights.
I agree. So we have a big gap, a knowledge gap in the community. There's been some marketing. It hasn't been sustained and it hasn't been clear and it hasn't been obvious. And so, beginning in August, when we relaunched the brand, and the reason we're doing it in August is, for this summer, our pre-bookings are so good, we don't have a lot of seats to sell for this summer. So we don't want to start marketing now when people are just going to get frustrated they can't get a seat. But it'll be much more sustained.
You will start with your students, international students, earlier, though, I hope, right?
Correct, yeah, we're talking about that tomorrow.
Okay, Aaron.
All right, so there's been a lot said. And the cost to Chicago is what? What would be just the average cost? I mean, we know a lot of people who have relatives in Chicago. What would it cost me if I wanted to just jump on a plane tomorrow, go to Chicago? Is it only O'Hare, is it Midway?
Yeah, all the service goes to O'Hare, all in American. The price varies wildly, just like all airline pricing. At the very lowest, you probably see it about $180 round trip. At the highest, if you wanted to fly tomorrow, it's probably $800 or $900. It's not priced for anyone to fly just to Chicago, though. It's priced to feed flights out of Chicago. So they don't really want to carry somebody who lives here who just wants to go to Chicago. They don't even try to compete.
Yeah, if you want to go to Paris, it'll cost you $15 extra round trip to start from here.
Correct.
But if you want to go to Chicago, you should take the train or drive.
Correct.
Okay, so I do see where the credit card piece is a big deal for people and I can see how that would, even from this whole notion or concept of what Uber is trying to do. I have my own concerns about that, but I think that's one of the more innovative things. I just recently took a cab a few times up in Chicago and I can see how a credit card makes things a lot smoother for people and people feel more comfortable about that. So I think that's something that, I still don't see how we have licensing, how we can control a license or something like that based upon that. But I see how we can work with the taxi companies and stuff like that to bring something like that. I want to say that I'm particularly disturbed, though, about just this public discourse that we're having as it relates to the terminology that's used about the taxi drivers and some of the things that have been said, sloppy, drunken and all that kind of different stuff. Even if it's true, I think that there's a different way that we could approach that because there are a lot of people in this community who have been taxi drivers for decades, who have small one-car, two-car operations and stuff like that. And I'm concerned that a public discourse that really starts to put all taxi drivers into some particular bracket just sort of feeds this notion of a, we need more strict and more rigid approaches because I'm particularly concerned about these background checks and all this kind of stuff that we're talking about because it has a disparate impact on a particular class of people. And so whether that's African-American or people with felony convictions and stuff like that that I'm particularly sensitive to. So I want to, I'm just concerned about that and I want to just put it out there that I thought that was something that we should be mindful of. I absolutely understand I want to get into a cab that I feel comfortable getting in. I want it to be clean. I want the driver to, you know, not be intoxicated, if that's the case, right? I definitely understand that and I understand what it means about the perception and how it feeds our, you know, recruits or whoever may be coming to the university. I definitely get that, but I'm just a little bit concerned about the nature of the discourse about that. And I don't know if this is a big deal for you guys, but just from my own personal standpoint, what I've often heard about why people don't fly out of Willard is because of the, I think Charlie was alluding to this, the size of the planes and feeling comfortable in a larger plane or something and things like that. And it always feels like a scary movie when I walk into Willard Airport. It's just like, where is everybody? Like, what's going on in here? You know, it's just, it just seems bland. So that's the best way I could, is that what it is? But I mean, there could be some, I don't know, something going on in there that seems a little more attractive.
Yeah, it's just the lack of passengers, I think. But that comment, it's not the first time we've heard it. We've heard it several times. And, yeah, we are working to try and get larger airplanes. They're all jet now, so we have all-jet service, but they are small.
Well, we do have a public hearing coming up at 7:00 and I really appreciate the depth that you've done on your study. And thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
So there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.